There's a tip on there.
We're live, so we're going to open the council meeting for today, Tuesday, April 23rd. As part of the council, we want to welcome and make sure that we acknowledge this meeting is being held in Unamaghi, one of the seven traditional districts of the Mi'kmaqian ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. So with that, the agenda has been circulated to you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, Councillor Patterson? Thank you. We will add that and we'll do that with course just after the motions and before correspondence. Any other additions? So those that may be joining us, we just did a four hour session for zoning and land use, so we're going to open today's session. And our first item up is Dan Coffin, Director of Tourism with the municipality, and he is going to give us a trails update and do a presentation. Welcome, Dan. We'll turn it over to you and please proceed.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting us in to speak today. Me, I'm speaking on behalf of our Trails Team Representative of our Trails Team. So some of these may look a little familiar. I've got a couple of slides that will recap the phases of the project, just so that everybody's brought up to speed on that, and then a couple of slides to update us as well. Soon as I can make the clicking work. There. So we'll cover the overview of the plan, project status update on where we are, touch base on the Trails Development Support Program and how successful that's been lately, and then talk about some next steps. And I did put one slide in just to give an update on the Seawall Trail, the Jig Tech Seawall Trail, because we've been spending a fair bit of time consulting and being on the Steering Committee with that as well. The philosophy of the project for the Trails Development Plan was really focused on three key elements. It was the research, which leads to Trails Development, which leads to marketing, management and maintenance of the trail system. That's not changing at all. Sorry, guys, it's changed the mind. Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. So yeah, I covered that plan overview, status update, blah, 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 blah. The philosophy of the plan itself, again, researched. Research which leads the Trail Development Plan, which then leads into the maintenance, marketing and management of the trail system. Let's try this again. Okay. So Phase One was research, so you can see we did a review of what's needed to satisfy the market. So viewing the underutilized current trails as they were, the trails plans that were in existence, again, going back to 2018 with the Victoria County Trails Federation that established a five-phase plan to develop that trail system, assess other best practices for what was being done in other places. I don't know why all the fancy noises, but apparently my check marks were in there from a previous one. And meeting with relevant project partners along the way, so seeing what what other places had done in succession, and I apologize, there's going to be a whole bunch more check marks coming. I can probably kill the sound on them at least. So again, in the research, we did reviewing the trail plans. We have a team that's reviewed and assessed all those current plans, as well as some proposed ones from project user groups. We did make some small adjustments based on some land ownership issues in the Big Bedak area. We've also met with ACOA Tourism Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage, Nova Scotia Department of Natural Resources, Department of Transportation or Public Works now, Nova Scotia Trails Federation, Advans Sands, all their trail user groups, including snowshoers, snowmobilers, cross-country skiers, hikers, and also with Inverness County Trails Federation, who we modeled a lot of this project off of as well. So a lot of that, that was the research phase conducted probably leading into last year. We've done some best practice missions as well, including a trail bike tour of the Celtic Shores Coastal Trail, which is an excellent example of what we would like to to turn this trail into. We did an ATV tour of our proposed routes. We've done snowmobile tours through the Highlands as well to explore the potential for for trails like the Mary Barker Trail going into Inghgash. And most recently, I attended a best practice mission in Quebec where I had an opportunity to do some trails, snowmobile trails as well as cross-country ski trails and see the impact that that's had on their industry as well. Not yet. Hey now, my birthday is not till next year. Some of the key findings were really trail access points. So how do people get into the trails? And you know, there's a couple of good examples of that in North River, for example, there's a on Oregon Road, there's 100 cars any given weekend parked along the side of the road and top of Cape Smoky, we saw it this year on one of the lookoffs as well. So trail amenity service spot to just put your helmet down when you're unloading your vehicle, a place to park your vehicle, those sorts of things for amenities and services at trailheads. And safety and maintenance has become a key element. We've seen great success in having investments in groomers over the last number of years. And that those groomers have led to a significant increase in the safety of our trails with very quality trail surfaces that people can can be comfortable riding on. And then trail destination points is the last focus that will be identified and that we found through our research is that trail destination points are where people want to go to, and that's what's going to keep people coming back more and more. In the Trails Development side, the whole focus was based on confirming the routes and securing easements and permits. We are still doing some of that. There's about five landowners left to work with on establishing some of that routing, establishing the trail infrastructure and construction needs, which we're well underway on. Confirming new and current funding, we just wrapped up our first ACOA funding where they had submitted $187,000 towards two phases of the initial start of the project. It did take a few years because the Archaeological Impact Assessment Study we had to do, that took quite a long time. We've done quotes and have contract suppliers for trail construction pieces, and again, user groups that we've worked with through the through the way as well. So as a status update, we have approximately 73 kilometers of trails in this plan that will be updated and upgraded to be able to connect the communities of Bedek, St. Anne's, North River, Rec Cove and Cape Smoky or Inghgash area into the trail system itself. Roughly 35 kilometers of that 73 kilometers is either complete or under some stage of construction at this point. We were blessed with the fact that the Department of Public Works has a very significant K-class road structure in and around Big Hill, Big Bedak area that that allows us to interconnect a lot of existing roads that that work very well in that capacity. The Mary Barker Trail in Inghgash, we've partnered with the Cabot Snowmobile Club to really push that project forward. So in December 19th of 2023, they opened up the trail for snowmobile use through to Cape Smoky, and we've seen hundreds of snowmobiles land at the top of Cape Smoky this summer, this winter. Sorry, snowmobiles at the top of Cape Smoky in the summer would be tricky. And so that that will that route will be advanced to multi-use status as well. It's not going to be there this summer, but they are going to continue to work on that trail to become multi-use as well. We've partnered with St. Anne's Bay Recreational Trail Society and Cratus Mountain Snowmobile Club on a route of the Big Bedak Road or the New Glen Road at the end of Big Bedak that's seen significant deterioration over the storms in the last number of years. Cratus Mountain has been successful in working with Off Highway Vehicle Fund to get a bridge replaced on one of the key trails. It's been a big stumbling block since 2021, I believe. So they've got the approval to do that bridge, and in doing so, we've agreed to replace the road on the way in there or to help fund replace that road so that the equipment can get in to replace the bridge and then open it up for all other trail users as well. That'll that'll lead to the Lewis Mountain upgrade as well, which will connect into St. Anne's down in the Millbrook area of St. Anne's and partner with the Trails, St. Anne's Recreational Trail Society. Most of the the more challenging pieces have been tackled first. We do have basically four key challenging sections left to work with. And that'll be the St. Anne's area, which leads up into the Highlands. So there's two significant areas that are hills and that will be a daunting challenge to overcome, but but they are ones that we've identified as key routes to being safe for trail access. And then in Inghgash, one area as well, which is the connection into the Mary Barker for this, the multi-use, and then in Big Bedak, there's still two areas that are fairly wet in in one area, and we're working with DNR now to identify the trail routes for those, so that we're at least avoiding as much wet material as we can. And then the next step will be trailhead development. So this summer, we've got applications into Department of Natural Resources for a trailhead at the Hunter's Mountain entry to the trail system. And that trailhead will include parking spaces, it'll include access areas and picnic shelter type things and privies eventually as well, which will allow people to use the washroom. And then from there, Hunter or North River will be the other area that will be worked on this year for a trailhead expansion as well, so that we get people off the roadways and into a parking area for use of that trail system. Big Bedak, St. Anne's and Inghgash will follow as trailheads after that, which will be the top of Cape Smoky as a trailhead entry point that'll lead into people either coming from Inghgash to get into the trail system or coming from south-north if they wanted to. From there, we'll commence Phase Five, Six and Seven, which will be one Phase Five is a connector into the Gala College from the Big Hill area. Six will be rooting from Bedak down back into the inlet, so we get closer to the Irving Station and to the gas station and campgrounds in the Bedak Inlet area. And seven would be a non-motorized route, which would be Bald Mountain and extending a non-motorized walking trail into the destination point of Bald Mountain. From the Phase Three, again, we aren't at this stage yet, but once the projects we just identified and the safety elements, the bridges and the access points are all established, then we'll work in the marketing, maintenance and management sides as well, which will include mapping and image of the trail system, connecting with Nova Scotia Trails and the digital signage presence through the different groups, as well as management planning, identifying speed and noise limits. We've already had some conversations with Department of Natural Resources on enforcement on those trails and how that could look in the future and what each party roles will play. So we'll play a larger role in etiquette and education in working with our clubs. And DNR will be there to help on the enforcement side of that as well. And then it becomes maintenance planning, which will a large part be done with cooperation with the user groups and through our Trail Support Program, which I'll highlight next. So Trail Support Program, based on the needs that we've have been identified to us by the different groups and clubs that are working on trail development. We've got three different streams of funding available, and these are the ones that we kind of look through the community grants when they come in, and if they're applicable to trails, we we pull them out to to fit this pot, but if they don't fit this, then they stay with you guys. So new trail development is one-time financial support for building of a new trail. It can be about 15% of the total project cost up to a maximum of $10,000. So we've worked well with the the Bear Shaw, rear Bear Shaw Trail in St. Anne's Tarbid area, has taken advantage of that program and been funded through that. And that's been a great one, as well as many other groups also. So that's if you're building a new trail, we have up to $10,000 available to fund and support that. New trail maintenance and repairs, obviously, there's there's lots of repairs required after some of the the climate issues we've been facing and and sometimes we have exceptional circumstances that we work with Department of Off Highway Vehicles funding as well. But this way, this is more of an annual thing. So if you have a trail and you've had a washout or you have some tree falls and you need a work crew to go in, we have funding up to $3,000 to assist with a third of the project cost for projects such as that. And that could be annual maintenance, it can be emergency maintenance or just general repairs and upgrades as you see fit. And then for marketing, we do like to work with groups on marketing and mapping, for example, and that provides up to $2,500 towards assisting with some of your your goals in in marketing or or mapping out the trails and projects that you're working on. It is not intended to support staff or wages in any way, so it's really focused on the project itself. Bedak Nordic actually took advantage of this this year with the signage that they put up at the entry to their Bedak Nordic Trail System. So that's been a good one for them, and Highlands Nordic has used it in the past for for their brochures and mapping that they put out. So looking at, these are some examples. So this isn't a full list, but we took kind of the top line items of groups that we've supported over the past three years with the Trail Support Program. Cratus Mountain Snowmobile Club, you'll see there 50,000, but that represents six different projects. So these projects, if they can finish them and close the most and we're satisfied with them and they apply again, we're we're able to do that. And and each year, we haven't turned away anybody from the fund in the last, as long as they were qualified and and able to fit within one of those three categories we showed you earlier, we haven't turned anyone away from the fund in the last three years. So it's been a great boost to what I'm hearing back from the clubs is it's showing a lot of positive influence in in helping them drive their plans forward as well. And you can see groups like Northeast Biosphere Trails Association, St. Anne's Bay Development Association, even Bedak Waterfront with Kids to an Island have taken advantage of that fund to upgrade trails based assets as well. So lots of lots of positive benefits going out to the communities for that fund, and I think it's been a big win and a nice offside addition to this project as we embarked on trails. It's 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 very much used as a leveraging, so we usually come in as the first fund, and then they'll go after the province and ACOA for additional funds, and in most cases, it's been pretty successful. We just had a request for extension from Bedak Nordic, because they've actually increased one of their applications, because the provinces let them know they can apply to a recreation fund rather than a trail fund. So they've been able to increase the ask from the province, and in turn, we'll be able to support them a little more as well. So the next steps for us are really continuing to work with the to complete the multi-use trail connection plan. Continue to work with community groups to support and align the priorities, which also includes non-motorized groups. There's been a lot of of questions about, you know, I'm like to do a walking trail, does that's that apply? And absolutely, non-motorized trails is also something that would be focused in this this group. Our first focus will be on access, so it's access to trailheads and safety such as bridges and the trail itself. So the main focus is taking some of those trails in the past were made for snowmobiles, but they're dangerous for ATVs, for example. So in in adjusting to a multi-use trail, we have to make sure that that safety element is maintained and adhered to as we build. And the next focus after access and safety will be again, user destination and or user experience and destination points. A lot of people that go up snowmobiling want to get to Cape Clear, they want to get to Bell Lakes, and but there's a lot of unplanned activity there as well. So we need to try to work around planning that and making sure that we enhance those sites for for appropriate user experience, and you're not walking into a bunch of garbage or toilet paper on the ground, for example. We've heard lots of examples of that. And then we'll be assessing needs and partners to work with some of the other underdeveloped trails. So Colleen has for the last year been working on some trail assessments. So some of the popular trails like Cosman and Tenerife and Humes River, for example, North River, we're well aware of, but there's actually been some great work by community group working on the North River Trail System. So these are all other projects that will look to support and and grow by enhancing trailhead access and and focusing on that access and safety angle, knowing what's coming with the Seawall Trail and the prevalence of hiking for people that are coming to this area. It's something that we can really have a big impact on as a as a secondary part to this project going forward. And then developing an optimization program, so how we improve those sites with that focus on safety and access. That quick enough? I know you guys had a long day, so I and I figured you're going to have lots of questions too, so I didn't want to push it too far.
No, as long as it wasn't on zoning and land use, we're very good, so.
I was going to bring in a map, but I, after what you guys went through this morning, I didn't think a map was going to be the most appropriate.
No.
Yeah, I did say that. I think that's just give me a second here. I think I hid that slide, but I can pull it back up. Sorry about that. I debated whether I'd show that. So the Jig Tech, which is the Mi'kmaq name for, and and it's translated into a difficult path along the water. That's where the name has come from. So Jig Tech Seawall Trail. I'm a member of the Steering Committee, which was appointed by the province when they assigned the $6.4 million of funding for the trail itself. It is led by the municipality of Inverness. They're the proponent, they're the receivers of the funding, and they're the lead decision maker on the project. There is a Steering Committee and a Committee of Advisory Members as well. So we sit as a member on the Steering Committee and on the Project Working Advisory Committee in in some capacity also. There's a exceptionally strong inclusion of Mi'kmaq into this project. It's been a core element of the starting group from the the Seawall Trail Society. And they were very conscious of bringing the Mi'kmaq into the project right from the get-go. It's been successful in establishing an elders advisory committee, which is made up of five elders around the different communities in in Cape Breton, the the Mi'kmaq communities in Unamaghi. And they've been integral in helping drive the project forward and working with the groups like KMKNO, who's responsible for the rights initiatives of the Mi'kmaq in the province, and they also hold the the knowledge on impacts from the land use and archaeological side. So right now, the group is working on the final alignment. So the the in the first section going in from Red River and the last section coming out into Me Cove is is aligned, and they have it the final alignment done. There's some areas in the middle that they're determining where they where the best rooting is to go, and there's some two or three areas that are just being finalized from an archaeological side as well as an impact on plant life, because there are some some very unique plants in that area that the Department of Environment is quite worried about. There's also been a lot of work done with moose hunters and the communities of Pleasant Bay and Me Cove are both represented on that Steering Committee as well. The construction is set to begin in 2024. There's a few hurdles being worked through right now when it comes to Department of Environment and Mi'kmaq Advisory on the archaeological side of things and how that progresses, so that should something be found that's of significant archaeological value, it will be handled in the proper way. And it will be a one-way trail running from Pleasant Bay to Me Cove. So there will be approximately three hut sites on the trail, so it'll be a three-night, three overnight stays. And when you book your stay, you're assigned your hush for each night, and there's no deviating from that. So there'll be a maximum of about 20 people per day accessing Seawall Trail. And with the popularity of that trail, it is expected that will become very quickly a year in advance booking. Because again, you're looking at 20 people a day maximum that can go on that route because of the huts that are available and and the control of of access is important as well from a protected area. The Orientation and Welcome Centre is currently planned for Me Cove, so people would drive to Me Cove, get their orientation, fill in the check boxes and then be shuttled over to Pleasant Bay Red River area and start their trek from the Pleasant Bay Red River area. And then finish in Me Cove where their car would be located as well. So that's a quick updates on that.
Very much, and I know there are questions, and we're going to open to the questions and start at this side's room, perhaps. Barb, anything or? Paul or Larry?
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Paul or Larry?
Keep that trail trail line in Iona open, we'll get to there next. No, great work, Dan. It's great to see all the work from doing on all the trails, especially the Inghgash Trail. I know the residents are quite happy with it. Two questions with the Seawall Trail. At one time, I thought there was a going to be some kind of a trail out to Cape North. That's no longer taking place.
And in the initial discussions when developed, Nova Scotia was involved, there was a lot of discussion about a a day use piece. So again, with 20 people being the max, there's a lot of opportunity there from a day use perspective. People will want to come and hike a part of the Seawall Trail. So there was a proposed route to connect in from Cape North. That was taken out for the for the time period now. It may be evaluated in the future. It also crosses through significant moose hunting area. There's there's a one of the one of the few week-long excursion packages you can book as an all-in-one in Cape Breton is actually a week-long moose hunting package. And and we don't want to impact that because it is, it could be have a high potential for value. So it becomes one of those trying to work with both groups. It may be that that changes in the future, and there's an access point through and that the current trail proves that they can be working together. So there is a future idea for that, but it's not not something that's part of the current plan, not part of this funding either.
I know that that's great. It's like, just glad to see that's proceeding. It's going to be an amazing trail when it's finished. Part two is mainly trails trying to connect communities. And I know from council, we've written the Parks Canada, the Minister and one requesting access for trails, but if you do have any chances with Parks Canada, please push that. I mean, it's to me, it's not acceptable. Did their business plan? When the biggest things come out of it, everyone was asked for Skidoo access. And again, when the their management plan came out, there was no access granted. So I think we got to keep pushing that. I mean, we have the old Cabot Trail, but you know, we got a lot of communities from Cape North, Dingwall, Neals Harbor, Inghgash, that should be connected. And I think we still got to push that. So if you have any avenues at all, any of your conversations.
I do have a meeting coming up with the Superintendent on a couple of issues, season extension and winter activity and how we lobby for additional funding. So Cape Breton Highlands National Park can maintain a higher staffing level in the offseason as we try to boost winter tourism is is part of that topic as is trails.
Okay, no, that's perfect. Thanks very much and great work.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You know, just thanks, Dan. Good report as always. Uh, Deputy Warden touched on the basis with the Parks Canada issue will be crucial from the north end. There's a lot of, uh, snowmobilers. Absolutely do a lot of traveling up to Recovary to unload their sleds and whatnot, but, uh, great report. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Dan, for the update. Uh, just question, um, do we, was the solution about with the DNR stuff, the, was a little miscommunication about the trails, uh, is, is, is going?
We're still working on it, working it out. It's, it's tricky because part of the land is Department of Public Works where it's an old highway. And then there's Department of Natural Resources, which is adjacent land to the public works land. Um, so we're working, we're, we've proposed from the county side that we bring in a surveyor, um, and have a, a third-party assessment on where that route goes. Um, and that we're waiting on that now. And I have a meeting Friday with Steve McDonald from Department of Public Works to, to finalize that piece next. But Department of Natural Resources, Morgan McNeil's been great to work with. Um, I should also note Department of Environment, Oliver Mas has been in touch and, and looking at the, how we work with our trail development plan as they try to increase, uh, protected areas and how that can work together so that one doesn't supersede the other and we can cohabitate in some capacity exactly. So.
Thank you. And just make sure your mic's on the Council Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, yes, it's on, I believe. Uh, Dan, I'm wondering if, uh, it might be too early yet, but we've looked, I think council has looked at this as a, an investment in trails. It's not, it's a cost, but it's an investment too. Uh, do you have any information or have plans to get information of how many tourists, for example, are attracted to Cape Breton because of, or Victoria County because of just, you know, the, the trails? Do we have that fine?
We don't yet. It, it does become part of that marketing, maintenance and management.
Eventually.
A lot of it will be done through exit surveys and surveying of visitors through Destination Cape Breton's channels as well. They've got a much more robust way of tracking visitation as well through some of the efforts they've done with CBU. Um, and then there will be our trail user groups or their trail passes through Snowmobile Association and Adfans ATV Association as well.
Supplementary, I guess. You mentioned the, uh, the moose hunting package and that seems to me to be an ideal type of product to have. So do you have, uh, or are there going to be plans, you know, like, like to, well, the skyline trail is gonna, is three days, but other smaller trails maybe, you know, three days and three trails kind of thing and put a package together for that.
Multiple ones. There's, um, Chris is working with Hike Nova Scotia on a badge. There's a Hike Nova Scotia Badge Program, Cape Breton Highlands National Park and Destination Cape Breton have done them in the past. But if you hike certain trails within Victoria County, you can achieve a badge and it's really a badge of honor, but it is literally a physical badge. And we will be launching some of those so that you can hit significant, but that's what goes back to that assessment of underutilized trails. So if, if you have to park on the side of a highway or in somebody's private land in order to access that trail, then we have to do some work on before we can start promoting them. Um, White Point is a prime example. We've got lots of parking issues at White Point because of people walking out to White Point. And when we have to, we can't impact the local residents so much so that it becomes a hindrance to them as well. So we have to work around some of that before we can market them.
Uh, the, uh, one at Daleham Lake, the trail around the lake, that's Department of Natural Resources owns and maintains that. Although that you go by, there's four or five cars there, lots of days. So even in. Yeah, they had the group. Yeah, that's right. So I mean, it shows that the popularity of, uh, trails.
Absolutely. Yeah. And it's, it's significant in every research from tourism as well.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Any other questions from anybody else? Yeah, sure. Can sir, make sure your mic's on, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Uh, just with, there's three trails in, in District Eight there would will be the Cosman Sugarloaf and the Peak.
Tenerife.
Tenerife, yes. I had some, uh, some, um, people in the area asking that obviously that's all provincial lands or crown lands. And they're looking for proper parking spaces that you just mentioned, or even signage.
Most of the trails are on crown lands, but in order to get to them, you're passing private lands in some areas. And that's where there, we will have to, we're, right now we're in the assessment phase. So identifying who owns the land, how people get there, what are the alternative, what are the, if there is crown land close by that could be used as a parking area. So we'll assess that first and then we'll go into working with landowners to see if they're even willing to create some sort of a, a model for trailhead, but that's really not going to take place really soon. I'd say it's a year or so away at least.
Thank you.
I will note, um, just in closing that as much as I'm sitting here presenting this, a lot of this work wouldn't be possible without the snowmobile clubs and the ski clubs and the, and the ATV clubs and their volunteers. Uh, they're the ones that have a lot of these visions. They're the ones that make it look easy and, and, and better for, for what we're able to accomplish. But also we have a trails team, uh, that works with us as well and does a lot of advising on how we go forward as well. So uh, hats off to all those volunteers that have had these visions and, and certainly we're happy to work with them to see it through.
Just a couple of quick questions before you go, Dan, just from my own district. One, I know we have a couple of different staging parking places and they're, they haven't been used yet or the, what's?
What's the, oh, by the waste management facility. So that's, that's at the end of phase one and the beginning of phase two. So phase one takes us from the curling club or the, the rink out to the waste management facility. So across the bridge and out into the, the area that's currently the waste management facility. The snowmobile trail, trail currently goes around our property and loops through Big Bedeck, which takes you through about 12 different private, private landowners. So our route is going to go from where it comes to the waste management facility to that parking area. And then across the Big Bedeck Road into Department of Natural Resources land and cross over Big Bedeck to Dennison Rear Road. So we can't open that parking area until we have the connection through Big Bedeck and that requires three to five landowners agreements that we're working on now. So once that'll be probably this fall that we're breaking into that one. And we have Department of Natural Resources application note now.
Great. And a knowledge of it was just asked if people see it, but they don't see it being.
Yeah. And yeah, it was a, it's a nice parking lot. I'd love.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a lovely spot. Um, the other question I had for you is, is just, I, I noticed, uh, the other day, there's a fair bit of damage from ATVs along the trail.
Beside the trail, on the side of the, in the grass.
Any idea what happened there or what, has it been reported or to not only the RCP, obviously, but the trails?
I've seen them. I, I don't know that it's been reported or not. It, it's, um, there's some factions of ATV riders who like mud. And our, our new fancy trail system doesn't provide a lot of mud opportunity.
Yeah.
Um, and they do tend to seek them out. That's part of the trail etiquette and management side that will come. Um, the challenge with the right beside the highway part is it's part of that highway easement. So it becomes a public's work, public works landish. Um, and when I meet with Steve on Saturday, we'll talk about some of those. There was some roadways left where they put the bridge in. So the roadway in on one side and, and on the opposite side of the bridge that are allowing for some vehicle traffic as well that, that we have to mitigate.
Yeah, I, I don't know who, who were it, but if you could just follow up with whoever's responsible, even if perhaps if nothing can be done, maybe we can send, uh, some kind of public service announcement asking people not to do that because.
That's one. Yeah, that's the first approach. I think cameras and, and enforcement will become another one in the future as well.
And it, it's just happens to be alongside the highway. So everybody sees it.
See it. And we'll get the blame for that before too long.
Yeah, great. Well, listen, thank you for the excellent report this afternoon. We appreciate your time and keep up the good work, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item up on our agenda this afternoon and we are excuse me, pleased to welcome Nicole Fawcett from the Victoria Reporter and the reporter at large, I guess I should say. So, um, Nicole had mentioned that she'd like to come and meet with council and kind of give a, a sense of, uh, how things are going with, uh, with the Victoria Reporter. So we've turned it over to you for your comments and your presentation. Then we'll open up some questions and go from there. If that works for you, welcome to council, Nicole.
There we go. Dan's kind of a hard act to follow because he's a little bit more professional at this than I am. I usually try to stay behind the scenes. So if you'll forgive me. Uh, but this was a great opportunity to let you know that we've reached basically our six month mark. Um, and we're really excited. We, we set some goals and, um, basically we've, we've been meeting most of them. So when we started with the Victoria Reporter, I'm terrible at reading the script, so I'll probably go right off it. Um, we wanted something that the people in the municipality consider their own. We did think of just, you know, adding more information into the straight air reporter being inclusive that way, but it didn't give a, a sense of ownership, which we felt was really, really important. So for the first six months, we've been focusing on making new contacts and our editorial, our content, those kinds of things, getting our subscribers and our readers. And the municipality has been awesome and supporting us. They've been really, really great. Um, from the very first phone call that I made. You know, we've had a really, really good response and we're extremely grateful for that. It's a difficult area to cover. It's a little large. Um, but it's also extremely unique and it's diverse and there's no way we could get every story in every time because there's so much happening. And that we find extremely exciting. So one of the things that's, you know, we're really pleased with is that although we expected it to an extent, the reception that we received from the other municipalities that we already covered has been extremely positive as well. People want to know, they're excited. They're excited to hear what's happening in Cape Smoky, what's happening in Bedeck. And it's made a difference that you may not have seen yet, but we have, because I know personally, personally, people that have read the articles, gone to see it, you know, have called us because they want more information about it. So I, I find that extremely positive and exciting and I hope that you do as well. Um, and really that's, that's the gist of it. So we come out bi-weekly. It's a, it's an insert into the straight air reporter. The reason that we chose to do it that way was one because we already had a way of getting it out. You know, it was, if we were to start from scratch, it would have been almost impossible to get the readership right off the bat. Um, again, the ownership, that was extremely important. And we went with the bi-weekly because you once had a fabulous reporter or newspaper, the Victoria Standard, and that was what you were used to. So we felt we would keep to the same, basically the same schedule. At six months, we have, according to our numbers from the papers that we sell and our new subscribers and such. At this point in, by postal code, we have a readership of approximately four to 500. That's a pretty good number starting off. We're excited. Um, we are hoping to really increase that once a lot of the seasonal residents come back home and realize that they can get this all year long, delivered wherever they are, if they're here or at their other place of residence. So that's exciting. And I do ask, I do have an ask, I'm sorry. Um, one is that you continue to support us and I hope you will because we feel that we're supporting you very strongly. And you know, so far, like I said, the municipality has been amazing. We're very, very appreciative of that you, of the support that you have given us. And I would hope that in the future, there may be some consideration if you have municipal advertising um, to consider putting it into the Victoria Reporter. And there's a couple of reasons for that. The Victoria Reporter is, our goal is for it to sustain itself. It's going to be very difficult. Um, honestly, it's, it's never going to be a big money maker. But if it can sustain itself, we figure that we have done a really great job and we're very proud of that. So obviously advertising revenue matters. But the other really important reason is the content of the ads. We want people to look for us for that information as well. Um, and that's, you know, it's a good resource. But with that ask, we also think that we're giving you a good value because of the readership we have in your municipality as well as the few thousand outside in Inverness, Richmond, et cetera, that are also reading those ads or events or whatever that you have. And that's my whole spiel.
Very well done. Um, so we will, I know that, uh, when we, uh, had noted that you were coming this afternoon, some of the councillors had some questions. So I think we'll open it up to, to some of those questions. And I think this time I'm going to start in this side of the table. And is there anybody here has any questions for Nicole? You do? Go ahead. And perhaps if you'd introduce yourself to Nicole because she'll, I'm not sure if she had the, and what, and what district that you represent. So she'll be familiar with who, who's who.
I know you did a wonderful job, just as well as Dan, just for the right. Uh, my name is Norman McDonald, um, councillor for District Eight, which is from South Harbour up to the line of caps to just Cape North Dingwall area, South Harbour, alter right over to Bay St. Lawrence. Uh, I've heard great things about the paper. Uh, just wondering if there's, is there a print that you can purchase or is it just digital? Because I've had people in my area that have seen online submissions, which I would generally share through one of our municipal pages. And people will comment, so where can I get this copy, like especially seniors, they were interested. Yes, but where in District Eight could you get?
Um, so we contacted basically before we started, we contacted as many convenience stores, um, all those places that would possibly carry it. And quite a few did. Um, you can also subscribe. It's a subscriber-based newspaper. So if you subscribe, you receive the reporter every week and every other week will be the Victoria. And I just want to mention as well, the reporter always, or I shouldn't say always, but almost always also has news in it, municipality, Victoria. And I know this week in particular, um, the 4H group is in it for some awards that they won. So we try to get everything in, we, as much as we can in the actual Victoria reporter, but the straight area reporter supports as well.
Right. Thank you. Council McLeod?
Thank you. Uh, I am Colonel McLeod, uh, councillor District Two will be Big Bedeck, Middle River, Bedeck Inlet, Naiyansa. Welcome. Um, yes, I hear a lot of, uh, the seniors and people is, they're happy to have something in their hands to read and a little about data about other county. So, uh, thank you for coming. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, uh, councillor Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Thank you, Nicole. Congratulations. Uh, my name is Grace Patterson. I'm the councillor for, uh, District Five, which is Bullody, on the other side of Kelly's Mountain. Uh, I actually, I think I sent you a congratulations on LinkedIn when you, when you started because uh, as we noticed over the last couple of years, since the Victoria Standard has not been printed, uh, there's a vacuum because there's nowhere to get your message out and there's nowhere to kind of receive the message. Um, so again, congratulate, you know, I've got, I picked up a number, uh, when I'm in Bedeck, but I'm very interested in subscribing, but just a most question, how do I pay? Can I pay my credit card? Or I don't have PayPal or anything fancy like that.
Oh, oh, no, we'll take your money pretty much.
So my phone and then give my credit card.
Phone and give a credit card.
Yeah. My, my son has, uh, a banking where he takes a picture of the checks. And then.
We're not quite that.
Well, it's amazing. Like, and it, it comes out of your account instantly. Like, it's just like they know exactly what you're doing. But anyway, I will call. There's a number in here. I assume they call your office and, uh, do that. And, uh, again, congratulations and I, I hope you have a long, uh, a long run at this because it is a need. Uh, one of my favorite newspaper stories, uh, I was staying at a hotel. I forget where it was now, a couple of years ago. And traditionally some hotels at one point put a newspaper under your door in the morning. So I mean, you didn't even have to go out. So I go down to the lobby and I'm looking around and I say to the young fellow behind the desk, I said, do you have any newspapers? He looked at me like I came from another planet. He didn't know what I was talking about. So I mean, the whole newspaper uh, business has changed so dramatically in the last few years. It's good to see you starting something. And with the prospect of continuing it too, I think that's really great. You deserve a lot of credit for that. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
You very much. And just a heads up that our video is not currently working, but we are, uh, making some arrangements to try and get it back up and running. So, uh, councillor Longba, perhaps.
No. Thanks, Nicole. You did a great job at your presentation. Um, I was curious. I was sitting there. I was like, oh, so wasn't it nice of the straight area to name the paper after us? Uh, and then I realized when you were saying like, there is two areas. Cause I thought that we were going to be just included in the straight, a section of the paper was going to be for Victoria County, but, uh, it's not. We have our own separate.
Well, it's kind of, it's, we, we would call it a B section. But it was very important that, yeah, it was inclusive to just the municipality of Victoria. So that's why there is a front page, there is an opinion page and it reflects what's going on at the time. And I don't think I mentioned in my, um, in my quick speech there. It would be, we would appreciate so much if you would keep us in mind when there are things going on. Um, if you have, you know, nonprofit groups or groups that are hosting something, make sure that they get in contact with us so that we can, we can promote it and we can help and we can assist in any way.
And I personally, who I am, I'm from Longba and, uh, District Four, which goes from the Bell Museum all the way to the foot of Smokey and the foot of Kelly's Mountain and. and the foot of Kelly's Mountain and all in between there, St Anne's, English Town. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Warden, and thank you Nicole for the presentation. Uh, like councillor Patterson said, it's a well needed resource for, for Victoria County. And uh, we miss having the paper, the old paper, the standard. And uh, for, for council too. A lot of our residents are complaining that the word for meetings and, and things that are going around the community isn't getting, getting out to them. So this is a well needed resource. So thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor.
Uh, hi Nicole, Larry Daphne, District Six, which is the English Beach and Northern English area down in Victoria County. Um, and I think some people are realizing here is I've been looking for this for a couple of weeks and I just happened to win the do's this Friday, a week or so ago, and I was talking to the owner there and I said, where do you get the Victoria one? He said, oh, it's included in the straight one. So basically I was going around, I was seeing the straight reporter paper, didn't realize every second time this is inside. Uh, so now that I know, I, I will, and I will like Fraser Patterson, subscribe to it and make sure the residents are aware of it. But it's uh, it's great having a paper back again. It's, it's been missed by many a people and uh, uh, I've already seen a couple of the articles and they definitely are very local and good to see. And uh, wish you all the best in the upcoming and hopefully from the municipality standpoint, we can support you a hundred percent and uh, and have a good future. We didn't keep this going, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Q. Perhaps introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, Leanne McCacken, Victoria County CAO. And yeah, we, we feel that it's a great addition. And we've noticed since uh, missing the Victoria County standard for the last few years, this is great. So well done. For a small business, well done. We're happy to support.
Thank you. Well said. Uh, Bruce Morrison in my district is, is Bedeckan area and uh, I, I just want to thank you very much for filling that void. We've missed our local paper. Um, so I'm also a subscriber and one of the first subscribers. And uh, that just is an indication of I amongst many in the community are, are looking forward to having the local paper back. So also had a chance to uh, read many of the additions that have come out since you started in the last six months. And I want to compliment you on, on the quality of the uh, the items that you've written and uh, quite happy with it. So, and hearing lots of good things about it as well. So we're pleased that you're back and uh, you know, I certainly think you can count in our cooperation and support as you move forward. And as Leanne said, nice to see another business starting up and doing well. It's a good indicator of where we're at as a municipality as well. So thank you very much and appreciate that you came and gave us an update today and gave us a positive update as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to take a 10 minute recess and then we will reconvene at about uh, three o'clock, please.
Okay, so we're going to reconvene, councillor, please. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to uh, move on to the next item of business on the agenda and that is the approval of the minutes for March 26, 2024. Those minutes have been circulated to you. You had an opportunity to review them. Are there any errors or omissions with those minutes? You have a motion to accept the minutes asked circulated, please. Thank you, councillor Longba. Second by the deputy warden, all in favor. Contrary minded, the motion is carried and the minutes have been approved. We're now going to have the CAO's report, please.
Yeah, so uh, you received in your package, uh, report from myself, which has different uh, department updates included in it. Just a few things I'm just going to note related to my report. Um, that related to my report. N S H A was here at the last committee, the whole, I believe, meeting that we had. They have sent me a note that they're going to start sending briefings as part of the regular council package. So monthly, they'll be sending a little bit of a briefing of things that they're working on. So some updates of things that that they have, which will be included as a regular agenda item. Also, as we discussed at the last council session, or the last committee of the whole, whole meeting, April fifteenth, Victoria Cooperative is have been granted an extension for the acceptance of Fish Offal until May thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, and they have been advised of that. In finance and nature, just a couple of things. We are looking at the community grants that have all come in, deadline of March thirty first. The review will be happening soon related to that, and we will be bringing it forward to this group through committee of the whole. Couple of things in public works. Dylan Consultants is helping us work through both our E P R change management plan, including the current state and E P R readiness and transition plans. As council voted in December to accept the recommendation to go with E P R. So we will be looking, we're in the process of our change management plan in relation to that. Straight Engineering is getting ready to schedule a staff member to survey the new transfer site in New Haven. The purpose of the study is necessary to determine the grades that are required for elevation and horizontal measurements. Something that is exciting, really exciting. The reuse center is opening April twenty seventh in Bedeck, and it is our plan to put a reuse center also in the new site in New Haven that I just spoke about. Best time of the year seems to be heavy garbage. Heavy garbage is coming up, May sixth. It will be starting May sixth. We'll be doing notices related to it. Don't, please don't put your your garbage out there any earlier than what we will be advising on that. For Jackie, Jackie's not here at today's meeting, but just let her know, or let everyone know, we'll be putting out the stairs at the New Haven Beach in the very near future as well. In relation to water, the Inghamish waterline extension has been tendered, and it closes at the end of April. Water bills. We have prepared the water bills. They're ready. People will be receiving these towards the end of next week or early, end of this week or early next week. We have included inserts in there talking about the rate increase as of April first, two thousand and twenty four. That was approved in the rate study. The messaging is posted on the website and Facebook prior to April first. To let everyone know, the Dingwall Water Tower is getting closer to coming online. If you've driven by Dingwall, you'll see we have two there now. We're getting Skata hooked up to the new water tower, and that will be coming online very shortly. In economic development, just one thing to note. There's a few there, but just letting you know, we're working on revitalizing the mountain bike strategy, which was in line with trail development. That was something that we talked about a few years ago, and then it sort of slipped off a bit, but we have some interest again in developing our mountain bike strategy. So looking at different areas of the county for that. In tourism, Dan's been attending Destination Cape Breton community sessions, and he's assisting with plans for the upcoming Inghamish Step meetings. They will be on May sixth and seventh at the Celtic for next steps in the Inghamish Step system that's going on down there. In community development, then there's going to be a new community comfort station or washroom coming to North Shore.
Yay.
Yeah. Uh huh. It's going to be at the Clocking Hen, so we're working with the new owners of that in relation to that, so that should be good news. There's place making meetings that will be scheduled in the coming months with communities to explain the program and explore new opportunities. Trails, you heard from Dan today and related to trails. We have applications submitted to D N R for work to begin on the two trailheads and upgrade. Upgrade number three on the trail plan. And in recreation, we talked about this at one of our budget sessions, but we've ordered eight new e-bikes for the county, and these will be a loaner program. They'll be placed in different areas of the county. There'll be additional details coming forward on that in June. And we also have a recreation equipment loan program. I'm not sure if anybody's seen Chris's office in there, but it is stacked full of equipment. So we'll be looking for community champions in this program to roll it out and watch for Chris visiting your community for an opportunity to find out more. And a couple of other things related to some prior district concerns that have come up. There was one about replacing Victoria County signs. They were not very, they didn't weather very well. We've received six new Victoria County signs. They're ready for installation. They're going to be replacing the signs that are already there, so we'll have a fresh new look. And just, I had mentioned earlier in the Uplands meeting, but related to coastal protection, the province is now hired or is in the process of hiring through N S F M a coastal protection coordinator to help municipalities, so we'll see what that means for us. But as you all know, coastal protections has been handed off to us. So we'll be working with the coastal protections coordinator.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just to comment, being on the signs, as far as I know, the one at Vice Mill is in good shape. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the one on the south side, but the one on the Saint James Road is the worst. I think I I had to send a picture to the warden because I didn't know how to send it to everybody else, so he was the most convenient number ahead. And I think you forwarded to Diane and Kelly. And I was talking to the other Bruce Morrison. He showed me them last week out in the back of the truck, so I think they're getting that up. But it was amazing, like you said, that ninety percent of the service and sign was not. Apparently, it happened during the Fiona. That's what I was told. They stood up well at the end, but but it really took a beating with that. So and we still get comments. I still get comments about how good those signs look. You know, we looked at them quite a few years ago, but they're still doing their job.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just if I could, just before we leave the signs, they the same as the ones we currently have naturally connected or?
They are naturally connected, but I believe they're a white background.
Okay.
So they are an updated look.
Yep. Sorry, councillor, I just had to throw that in. I'm forgetting.
I just wondered if there was any feedback on the Red Cross Wilderness and Remote First Day Training if anyone's applying for it or
there's people applying for it. Yep, there's there's quite a few that are interested in it. Great.
My mic wasn't on when I said that, so. Yeah, I just want to, my apologies, I didn't have my mic, my mic on, but we did receive a note from Osborne Burke, and it states, thank you. And the councillors on behalf of Victoria County, or sorry, Victoria Cooperative Fisheries Management Management and the Board of Directors for your consideration of our request, this will allow Victoria Cooperative Fisheries to need a time to proceed with several options to address our needs. So they're addressing those issues, and I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you. District concerns for councillor Longba.
Um, first, I'd like to express my sincere sympathy to Barbara Barbara Tower and the Montgomery and Tower families on the loss of Dawn Tower. He was retired from the military for years, but he's a very active volunteer. And just one of those that he was very dedicated to was the Seek to Death program in Bedeck. I'd like to just report the light is burned out at the Saint Anne's Turnoff, and it's extremely dangerous turning in there in the nighttime. And so I'd like to make a motion to ask Nova Scotia Power to replace the bulb in that light. I believe I believe it's them just because it's on the Saint Anne's Road. It's not on the highway. The one on the highway is lit, but the one on the Saint Anne's Turnoff is out. So if I could make a motion.
All right. I'm gonna have to check on the way home. Yes, I remember it's highway. Yeah. Yeah. I'll check on my home. I think it's Warden.
Okay.
Because the one on the highway is metal. That would be Steve McDonald, but the other one. So can I make that a motion to write a letter to Nova Scotia Power, ask them to replace the bulb? And if it turns out it's a metal pole, I will contact Steph and tell her so that we can, then I'll just send it to Steve McDonald.
For that, please. Second by councillor McNeil, all in favor. I'm very minded. Motion's carried. Thank you.
Um, there's been issues with mail delivery. Well, in rec from Reco to the foot of Smokey, the mail driver who drives that route does not go past where all the people live. Like she only goes to a certain point and doesn't go right to the foot of Smokey. So I I would like to, and then there's another issue on the other end at the, from the English Town Turnoff to the Saint Anne's Turnoff on the Trans Canada, there's or on the highway there. That's considered the Bedeck Postal Area, but the mail carrier for that area doesn't do that part between those two turnoffs. They don't, they won't pick up. So those people have to go to the Bedeck Post Office if they want to receive their mail, which is quite a ways, like for someone from the English Town Turnoff to have to go all the way into Bedeck to get their mail. It's not like they live right in town. I don't know if there's a a distance, but I'd just like to make a motion to write hand a post a letter asking them what the reason is for the absence of this service to these areas.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that, please? By the second by the deputy warden, all in favor.
All right.
Contrary minded, motion is carried.
That's it for District Four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor McNeil, any district concerns, please?
Yes, thank you, Warden. I had office hours in Little Nares Community Center last week. Actually, there were a few people showed up at this this month. A few items came up. They're looking, now that the the Nares Community Center was upgraded, they're looking to see if they could be designate designated as a comfort center or a warming center. With with the with the gypsum plant opening up, I think it would be beneficial to have that community center as at least a warming center. Also, they're looking for more police presence in the community. I asked, when the surgeon was here, I asked for more police presence over in the district. There doesn't seem to be any more since then. So if a letter could be sent or contact them for more police presence in over in our district. Again, road sign, a number of public works issues came up. McKay's Bridge has to be fixed and road signs. And another big issue that came up from all the people were was the garbage along the side of the road. And is there a program that the municipality could have for for garbage to be picked up during prior to tourism season? So that were some of the items. Also, I have two requests. I make a motion that a thousand dollars from my district budget be given to the Highland Village to go towards sponsoring a youth music and square dance workshop.
Second for that motion, please. Second by councillor Longba, all in favor.
All right.
Contrary minded, motion's carried.
And also, I would like to take a thousand dollars out of my district budget to rank and school the Nares to go towards the S A C Committee for various projects in the school.
Have a second for that, please.
Second.
Second by councillor McDonald, all in favor. Contrary minded, motion is carried.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your district concerns. Deputy Warden Daughn.
Warden, just a couple of things. First of all, I had a couple of calls in regards to erosion on around the Cabot Trail and been in touch with Steve and Glenn on that, so it's being looked into. Just want to remind, especially new councillors, that being the last year of our term, that we're only allowed to use seventy five percent of our budget. That was something that we made years ago, so just keep that in mind when you're spending your money, that you only have seventy five percent of this year's budget plus whatever you rolled over. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that two thousand dollars be provided to the English Automobile Society to assist with their building of a shelter that they're working on. So I make that a motion.
We have a second for that, please. Councillor McNeil, the second of that, all in favor.
All right.
All right. Contrary minded, the motion is carried.
And that's good for District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Warden. Just a few things more for to reflect in the minutes is getting quite a few calls from people asking about if there's any tenders released for the the paving project to start at Effies Brook, and I just asked them to contact M L A Bang. Who in turn said that the tender is being, I guess, wrapped up, ready to roll out soon. So there's lots of work going in the area. People stakes in the the roadway, so it's looking promising that that section of the Cabot Trail might start as early as June, but
Great.
Believe it when we see it. Just want to also say for community cleanup, I had ordered some supplies, garbage bags, gloves, and that. It should be ready by this weekend. Just to let people know they can contact me through email or phone, whatever. It's easier for them. And I'd like to take two thousand dollars from my district A budget, one thousand going to the Bay Saint Lawrence Fire Department, specifically for the Crab Festival, which will be in July, five hundred for that and five hundred for the department. And the other thousand to the Cape North Volunteer Fire Department, five hundred of that to the department, and the other five hundred to the Cabot Auxiliaries Ladies Club. So.
I think over a thousand, so we need a motion to split in thousand for, oh, you're splitting that four ways.
Yeah, but it's one thousand to Bay Saint Lawrence, thousand to Cape North. It's just four different entities within those. I don't know. I don't think I had to make that motion.
No, I, you're good. Thanks.
See, I'm learning a little bit.
Anything else?
No, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Very much. Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Warren. I have a few things. I would like to, if we can send a letter to Cape Breton School Board for invitation to Susan Kelly, I would like to talk about the parking lot issue for drop and pickup from Bitter Academy. And we have the sidewalk to we talk about for the village. Maybe when Kelly's here, we can invite somebody from the village to to come to talk to Kelly and us to to, I don't know, to where about the sidewalk, what we can do about that. This is why, so I make a motion for invite Susan Kelly, the transportation staff or.
Do we have a second for that, please? Second by councillor Longba, all in favor. Contrary, and I can tell you, councillor, I spoke with Steve directly about that issue as well, and the deputy minister, so they're they're well aware of the delays.
That she is very supportive, so let's go move that.
Perfect.
Soon, right?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. The second is half official hours for May twenty second for me, the councillors, one at twelve to one o'clock. I would like if they couldn't add in the in the website, in the calendar website. And if communication can maybe assign like a part of putting the sandwich in, you know, in the signup side, so I can put it there so they say I'm here. So, yeah, so I can have something that, and I just, when I come, I just can put it outside. The third thing is the dog park. Just wondering what a stage we are with with the next steps that we were talking about, if we can have some updates about that.
I can remove that.
Yeah, yeah, but for the next meeting. And listen to me, open minds. We know I said kind of worms, but anyway, so I have a constitution about the private roads. So I know we have some residents that have private roads and trying to do some work in the roads and asking for help for us. I know we don't take over for maintenance of private roads. This is if we have a L I I C, a bylaw will will work because they have Esmercy Road, so they have a Because, um, they have, it's Mercy Road, so they have a section from Mercy Road to Eagles Way. And they're trying to fix the road and they're trying everything, but it's not funding anywhere. So they're coming for, they, the, the neighbors are getting the pot, the money for fixing. So they're asking if the municipality could, uh, help for, uh, some money. Uh, in the past with Athol Grant, the former councillor, I don't know, you remember, the Two Base Land Orders Association. So he helped them, he did it with his district budget in that time. Um, my question is, if we have all these, uh, residents in all the districts with issues about private roads. Uh, we, we also, we don't give the help because it's not where mandatory, right? So, but the problem is there and it's going to be there. I talked to Steve and Steve is now going to, uh, the province is not going to do anything. Municipality is not going to do it. And they paying taxes. I know the taxes is go for, uh, different services, but they still residents. So they don't asking for much. They, they, the quote is sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-six. They're coming up for eleven thousand eight sixty-six they're going to put on. So they asking for a help for five thousand dollars. So I know if we do one, we have to do it for another person the next time. So my approach for this will be if we couldn't do, um, part of money like at the trails, just for private roads. But we differ with exactly requirements, very strict requirements to, to just have a little help for them. So it's just to put on the table for, you can think about it. Um, we have the LIIC, well, just will be exactly example how works the bylaw, but we don't have it. So we need to look forward because the issue is going to be there and not going to go away. So I was thinking just if we couldn't do some grant, uh, like a trails, like we have the trails, just, uh, and I'm on every year for help the residents, so. I don't know.
So that would be potential budget considerations, yeah? So they're, so that would be something that would be forwarded to, for budget conversations? Is that what you're thinking or do you ask for the amount of money as well?
First, if I can, if we, we can give, uh, you know, if we can help for these five thousand dollars, we're asking. Uh, secondly, if it is, uh, depends on the answer, if not, well, have this, uh, in budget time, I know we're still in budget, so.
So, uh, the, the request from the residents for that private road is five thousand dollars. Yeah, we have to deal with that first. Is that a yay or an a on that?
Great idea. We'd love to do it, but I know probably about eight, nine years ago, we did a study. We were looking at the same thing about some people were asking to subsidize for us to look after the roads and say that. And I know when we impact eastern district planning, there was something like, I don't know how many hundreds of roads, uh, private roads in Victoria County. Um, the thing with trails is that anybody can use them. That's for all people coming, visitors, tourists and all that. With private roads, mainly the people that use them are the people that live on it. So if we do one, like you said, how do you do one without doing other?
No, I, I'm okay. It's, it's just for one, it's for, uh, it's open to all the residents in Victoria County. The, the, the process is not like a, of, like a trail. It's like, uh, not because trail. It's just example of how we can put our money aside, but the, how do they require the money? How, how are they going to get the money? So will be in a strict requirements of, of steps to get granted, like a, I don't know, a max of, I don't know, amount. Uh, how many kilometers, how much, uh, the community or the group have to have in the pot. Or we go just one third max or, or a little of a quarter. I don't know. It's, it's just, no, we're not going to fix maybe all of it, but at least if the, if the community is getting together, because they care about the road. He's, he's where they live and they're trying to put the extra money and all that. But they pay taxes too, right? And I know they buy, when they spread the road, they know the services, I, they know everything, but that don't mean any, that don't mean that we need to do, at least try to help them, right? But, uh, and it's not like they want twenty thousand dollars, like, uh, we can, we can put in the requirements, only this amount. And they, they have to do it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just saying, you're opening up a whole.
It is, but that whole, that can is going to be open forever because nobody's helping them.
Yeah.
The province is not helping, TR is not helping, um, municipality don't have the funds for do it. Because we are the small and we don't have enough taxes to do it until someday, maybe we have more time, more development. But that is if, right? But right now is just, uh.
No, I, like, I've had a request over the years too, like, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
I, I just can't see how you can actually do it for one and, cause everyone's gonna want it.
How, but you're going to do, uh, I don't know, uh, pay, uh, contract, how do you call it, bylaw or, or a policy? Like the grants, right? Like, then you say, I'm like a trails, uh, we have only a hundred thousand dollars. And everybody had to apply and this, and the requirements are there, they say is, oh, it could be a draw, right? Like, uh, if you have twenty and you will have to ten, they know that it's going to happen. It's, but at least it's some help because the road, you know, I don't know.
Right, I just quick question.
I'm sorry, I gotta go to Counselor Patterson and Counselor McDonald.
As a person who lives on a private road, I think it's a great thing, but I don't think it should happen. I mean, you have a private road, you know you're responsible for the, uh, maintain, maintenance of it. I can see this snowballing, no fun intended, that, uh, we have a big snowstorm like we may have had in the past. And somebody can't afford to have the road plowed because, you know, I know, I know you're not talking about that. But this is what people are going to see and think. And as, as, you know, as Counselor Duff, Deputy Warden Duff, he said, there's thousands of kilometers of private roads in the county. So you cannot treat one, one way and then not treat everybody. And like I said, I live on a private road.
Yeah, but if the person have, uh, like the community or, or the neighbors have the money to, they're not asking for all the money. They're asking, they're asking just a third or maybe less than a third to help out. The rest they're putting in on by the, their own money for, for fix it. They're asking for plow. They're asking just for, for.
I, I know what you're saying. I agree, but it could extend to that. But on my road, my neighbor and I know we have to have the money if we want to maintain the road.
Yeah.
If they have some, they should have all, because I don't think if the county gets into subsidizing private roads, it is gonna be a nightmare.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna come back. And you said it correctly, it was a can of worms, so we, yeah.
Last time, again, twenty years is going to be can of worms in a hundred years because nobody's putting a solution. But it's just asking if, we, we just think a little bit out of your box, oh, the if of the future, because we don't can read the future. We are right now with a problem because we're thinking about the future too many times and we are not fixing things. They, you know, is, we, I, I'm not asking for, make a budget for grants for two hundred thousand dollars. But I'd say maybe ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars, you know, and then it, that is just a requirement to give it to some, to the residents a little bit of help in, in that. I know it's a can of worms, but we are not asking for, it's no plow and we, it's just a, a strict project they want to fix.
A specific project.
Specific project. And that was the LIIC, so that is.
So I, I would say that that would be a budget discussion and, but you have raised it to the point. Um, as far as the specific request for assistance, my sense is that's not something we want to get involved in. Am I right or wrong on that?
That is correct.
So, yep, and we, we know the justification for it, but as, as they, and, yeah. And the residents brought it to you, you brought it to council, you did your due diligence on that, so, yeah.
Is there anything in the municipal government act that states that we can't do private roads? As far as it, something, I thought that was brought up in the past, but.
You're not allowed to fund private, you're not allowed to fund private businesses, you're not allowed to fund private residents. Do you need me to say that the L, uh, the LIC would have been away for this?
I think Counselor MacLeod did say it.
She did.
Yeah. And that would be an example of why, the value of an LIC, the local improvement charge. All right, well, thank you for bringing that up and I'm sorry we can't provide the funding, but.
I just got to bring it to the table. I made my case.
You did your part. Absolutely. Thank you. Well said. Uh, any other district concerns, Sarah?
No, that's it.
Okay, uh, district concerns for you, the.
Yes, Warden, thank you. Uh, it's, uh, a new season, it's streetlight time again. We have our one allotment. Counselor Longba mentioned the problem with the lighting. For those of you who heard the Richmond County, uh, report, uh, this morning. They have had issues, are having issues with streetlights. Uh, Steph is checking for me as I speak, but I know one of them was ordered in September. And guess what? It's still not there. Uh, the other one was a relocation, which I think Steph probably October, maybe November, but I'm not sure. But it was before Christmas, I'm pretty sure. That hasn't happened. I'm gonna request another one today. But, you know, i- i- if, if they are not gonna do them within a year, why, why don't they tell us that right off? Because what happens is the people think that you didn't submit their request because the light doesn't show up. So, uh, I've been in the letter that you're sending to Nova Scotia Power. Maybe we could add into that the frustration of residents in not having streetlights installed in a timely manner. Uh, you know, so is that acceptable to the, the barbed, as the move of the motion and so on? Steph, you okay with that? Having said that, I want to request the streetlight, uh, at two five seven one, uh, O Route Five. Okay, so make a motion to that effect? Yeah, so the two that I mentioned earlier, uh, neither one of those are done yet. And this, this is the third one, so.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. So your motion, Counselor Patterson, is for streetlight for which location?
Sorry?
Your motion was for a streetlight.
Yeah, I knew when, uh, Warden, yes, twenty-five seventy-one, O Route Five.
We got that and that's been moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion is carried. Counsel.
Thank you, Warden. That's it.
Just, um, make a little update on a couple of things. So Paul, in your district, you're talking about, uh, cleanup. Um, not sure who else is thinking these, this is the, the season for that. But, uh, you could host a community cleanup similar to a couple of other areas. You can let us know and Collection will pick up the bags. Um, also, your red, your residents could register with the Great Nova Scotia Pick Me Up. And we can provide bags and gloves as requested related to that as well. It, it can, yes, if you let us know, we can, uh, provide you some bags. Yeah. Um, and then also, we're just not a hundred percent sure if it's seventy-five or fifty percent of your district budget. I'm quite certain all of you know. So, okay, all right. Okay.
So we're going to Deputy Warden for a quick comment.
Just a quick one, uh, based on what, uh, uh, Counselor Patterson was saying about Nova Scotia Power and stuff. I know a couple of months ago, we requested them to come to council and then they sent us a letter stating how things improved and stuff. Which, yeah, I think some things have improved, but some things have gotten worse. Um, an incident in, we had a pole on fire at, uh, Jig and Cove, which is just before the hospital, Neil's Harbor. Um, we don't have any linemen in the area anymore. We have contractors who were at the Celtic and I don't even know where they're, if they're even in the area anymore. But we don't have any linemen north of Smokey right now. And when we had the power, the pole on fire in Jig and Cove was by Neil's Harbor, Halifax actually had the ability to go in and turn the power off from Rec Cove all the way down. So everywhere's north had no power, where we had our local lineman, they could have went to Broghove, turned the switch there, replaced the pole. And only half the people would have been in power. But I, I think based on the things going on and not seeing anybody in the area, I think it might be that we request once again, maybe make a motion that we request Nova Scotia Power to come to council. Uh, cause I'm really interested in seeing why we don't have any lineman north of Smokey right now and why we're relying on contractors. So I make that a motion.
Yes, sir.
It's that time of year too with, uh, department of highways and grading and summer works. I think we should request a meeting with, uh, Steve McDonald for council and MLA Keith Bing. Just so everybody knows what's the problems in there.
See what the summer programs are. So we'll, we'll ask CAO to contact, we don't need a motion for that. So we'll ask CAO to contact both representatives and go from there.
Yeah, thank you.
We good? Any other district concerns before we go to District Three? Just very quickly, along the vein of, uh, streetlights, I'd like to order one, make a motion that one be installed at fifty-one High Street, fifty-one High Street Bedak.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the table. You have a second for that motion? Seconded by Counselor Longba, all in favor. Contrary minded, motion passed.
Sorry and excuse me, and there was a, we received a note from Lisa Mulak, who was here on behalf of the, the library board. And, um, there were, um, potential misinformation, both the Deputy Warden and I received about, uh, library locations. So we said that we, she asked if we would note that we would follow up on those corrections. And they were just, they weren't serious, uh, items other than the fact that just correct some communication from the landlord to the Deputy Warden. And for me, it was to check and see if there was a handicap sign and, um, accessibility parking at the local. So, um, Deputy Warden has looked after his conversation, it will be shortly. And I am in the process, I contacted the fire chiefs this morning because they own the building, the library is in in Bedak. And we're setting up a meeting with, uh, uh, the library, the fire department and ourselves, just to follow through and see what, uh, what is, uh, there as far as accessibility and handicap right now. So I just wanted, as she requested, we would make those, uh, things, uh, at, noted at council and we have. Um, just in the last thing, there is a, uh, community cleanup here on, um, Saturday morning, ten till twelve. And, uh, we have sponsored by providing gloves, bags and, uh, one of the trucks for picking up. So, uh, those resources are available through the municipality. If you're having a cleanup in your area, please give, um, the public work staff, uh, at least a week or more notice because they have to order the bags and/or gloves. So just a heads up there as well. Um, so that's it for me. For district concerns, we are going to go to the next item on, uh, council. We need to, uh, very important item to approve the municipal budget. Um, the audit committee and the fina, the, uh, finance committee and the SAT. We had, uh, budget deliberations, we had received recommendations there. The recommendation at that council meeting was that we set the, her in that recommendation report that we set the residential rate at a dollar fifteen, a commercial rate at two oh nine. We have to, uh, have a motion to accept those rates. Do we accept those rates? If we do, we need a motion indicating that we do. Any discussion?
Uh, I have discussion.
Yeah, we have to have the motion first. Okay, and then we're going to ask for a seconder, and then we'll have discuss. So. Second by Counsel Longba. So any discussion on the motion, Counsel McLeod?
I have discussion, uh, as, well, she was not here, she's in, uh, her email. I know she can vote, but she, she's in an email to you guys saying, uh, morning, sorry, I will not be able to attend the meeting today, but would like to have any input on tax vote today. After much thought, I do not agree on the five percent reduction. If you decide to reduce by any, I recommend one point five or two point, between one point five, two point five reductions. That's hers. Uh, I'm the same, um, I'm agree with the reduction. I know maybe we are on numbers tonight, but, uh, I couldn't go one point eighteen. I think, um, checking the, the taxes, um. The average tax assessment residential is about, about one sixty thousand dollars in all the, they're accounted, and I asked the tax office to give me the numbers. Um, for example, the average residential bill will be nineteen, will be with one point twenty-two is nine, is a thousand nine fifty-two. And we bill the, you post, it's only a thousand eight forty. So it's a hundred dollars just the difference that you're putting down. And it's not about that. It's about if you go back, it's for the next five years, is to put it up, and at least one point twenty-two will be, depends, will be difficult, and we have to think ahead about the projects that we are going to have next year and the next five years. And, you, as you know, they, the resident, the, the residence aid don't send take two too good when you put it at least one cent up every year. So. If I'm, I'm against to the, go to one point fifteen, I could go one point eighteen. So that gives us a couple cents to, to work for, put it back to the next, the next year, so.
Okay, and we will, we'll have the discussion and then the votes. Does anybody else wish to weigh in on discussion?
Question, sorry. Why we decide just right away for one point fifteen? Why was the, the resiliency for that?
Uh, that was the rate that was proposed by staff at through, uh, at our budget deliberations. And that's what we.
Well, I think we, we talk about decrease, but they just took their number one fifteen instead of one eighteen or whatever.
Yeah, and, um, our Chief Financial Officer has also provided a document today, so you can see the changes and what the different rates would. So the question being, are we going to, if we're, we're still going to vote on the rate, if it passes, it, it's the rate, if it does, and then we have the discussion about what we're, we want to come back to. So do you have a question or comment?
I just wanted to say what, that the reasoning behind, part of the reasoning behind, I'm sure is because our assessments went up so much this year.
That's a very good point, too. Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah, our assessments went up ten percent.
I would warn, I'd just like to say that I'm actually in favor of the recommendation from finance. Um, I honestly feel that people are struggling. And with, uh, the outlook of everything, our assessments are going to continue to go up, up and up. I think the municipality is in a, I don't know if I'm in a sort of comfortable spot right now, but we do, we're, we're doing better than we have since I became a counselor. So I just want to say that I'm in favor of the the dollar fifteen.
Thank you.
My two cents.
Appreciate that. Anybody else have any comment? So if there's no further, sorry, did you have something, Counselor?
Thank you, Warden. Um, as many of you, uh, know, in the past, I said, I often said that it's easier to, uh, to put the rate down than it is to put it up. And when you start putting rates up, people don't. Okay, I'm right on, I'm right on top of the mic. I don't know.
Not you.
Oh, oh, for you. Oh, okay. So, uh, it's easier to put the rate down than it is to put it up. And once, if there's a problem in the future, it'll be hard to put that rate up five cents, or, uh, and, uh, I agree with Counselor, uh, 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 McLeod. Would, would just have to.
Right, so, thank you. Deputy Warden.
Yeah, and I understand where these are all coming from, but we got to look at things where we are today. We, we can't predict what the future is going to be and up or down. Right now, we do have a lot of residents that are struggling. Um, you know, I'd like to see it even go lower than that, to be quite honest with you, but I think it's a very good recommendation that the one point one five is very reasonable. Um, like I say, assessments are going up. We, it's, you know, they've been amazing how much the assessment's going up. And based on economics, when assessments go up, the tax rate should go down so that we have a balanced budget. So I'm definitely in favor of the one point one five, uh, to give the residents back as much as we can, make that a statement.
Thank you.
Warden, just, uh, as the mover to, I get to, last, last word or whatever. Uh, sorry, it's on, uh. Listening to Richmond again this morning. The rate is sixty-six cents, I believe, is it? Sixty-six? Richmond or Geisborough? Richmond is steadily at that, too. So we have to realize that people that are coming back to Cape Breton look at how much they're going to be paying in taxes, and property they might buy or, or build. So if we have to compete with Richmond and Inverness, I don't know what Inverness rate is, but it's possibly lower. You know, we, we, if we don't make this adjustment now, we could place ourselves out of the market, you know?
So just, just to note, though, the two that you mentioned, Geisborough and Richmond, all have a large commercial base.
Yeah.
And so they have investments there that they've supported in the past, which has helped to reduce the residential rate.
Yeah, but a person, I understand that, and, but a person buying a property looks at the tax rate. They don't, they don't care about what's going, how much money they got or whatever. They're looking at what they're going to have to pay in taxes. So that, that's my point.
And just done for my own district, and I said this at budget deliberations as well. Uh, I'm in favor of the one fifteen. As a village resident, our, our village taxes are going up. I agree with the Deputy Warden. There are people that are facing financial challenges every day here. And, uh, our assessments have gone up ten percent, so, um, I feel that if we can, uh, hold it at that rate, that's why I'm in favor of it. So with that, the motion is on the floor to accept the rates at, and I just want to be very clear, a dollar fifteen residential, two oh nine commercial for the next taxation year. Um, in favor?
I am.
Contrary minded? So just so we know, the contrary minded is Counsel McNeil, Counsel McLeod, uh, Counsel Oregonas indicated her, uh, she can't vote because she's not here, but we have heard her comments as well. So, um, the vote is four to three. And, uh, having that vote means that the recommendation, I did vote, yeah? What did I say? Five to?
Eight.
It should be five. Jackie's vote doesn't count. That's why I said it's four to three. We clear on that? She's not here, so. And, but I did indicate her preference, but, uh, in, in absent, she is not here. So the emotions with the amount. Stady.
Is it supposed to improve the total budget?
Okay. So you pass that over on? Yeah. So which one is it you want?
So this is the one you just made with the rates? But can a motion to approve the operating budget of an operating to approve the capital budget?
So do you want this all in one motion, or do you want three separate?
I think it should be three separate.
Okay, so, one, two, three?
Yeah.
Okay, so the recommendation, uh, or the motion, uh, with the motion.
We did.
We, we did pass four to three.
Correct.
The, uh, just to correct, to avoid any confusion, residential and resource tax rates of dollar fifteen per one hundred dollars of assessment, commercial tax rate to two oh nine per one hundred dollars assessment. We good with that? That's the motion. So the second motion would be recommend, or a motion to approve Victoria County's operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five with revenues of fourteen million, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and, or fourteen million, two hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred and forty-four dollars with expenses of fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-nine, two forty-four. So that's brings us back to a balanced budget. So we need that as a motion as well. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Do we have a second for that?
Okay.
Second. Counselor Patterson, all in favor? Any discussion or clarification required on that? Right, uh, motion to approve Victoria County's five-year capital budget for the fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five of twenty-five million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars. We have a motion to that effect, please. Thank you, Counsel Longba, is seconded by Counsel McDonald, all in favor? Any, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. You're not in favor of which? Yeah, we, I've recorded the na, the negative votes. Thank you. Thank you for providing the financial information and the proper motions. Uh, we have a proclamation for Lyme disease awareness month. We're not going to read it, but we will, uh, ask for a motion to accept from, uh, except that we promote.
Make a motion.
That's moved by Counsel Longba, seconded by Counsel McNeil, all in favor. Contrary minded, we will sign the, any correspondence? Yes, sir. So, oh, I'm sorry, because I was going by the, uh, the, um, online agenda, and I did add you under correspondence to floors.
Oh, I thought it was under, okay, go ahead. Yeah.
No, you go ahead. Okay, we didn't have any correspondence, did we?
Conference has been forwarded to you in your package, and anything that you have requested has been.
Right. So thank you, and I did, you were in the right sequence. I was correct after all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Uh, okay, thank you very much. Just three quick things. Uh, first of all, there was a, uh, FCM communique, uh, dated March, no, the meeting was March seventh. I did send it to everyone, uh, has, um, reports on the committees and the boards' activities. The second item is a letter which was, uh, sent out by the NSFM. Um, and I think I sent everybody a copy, maybe just this morning, uh, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. And I had indicated earlier that there could be some possible changes to the, uh, CCBF, the Canadian Community Building Fund, formerly known as the gas tax. Well, the second paragraph in this letter pretty well lays out that there changes are being negotiated. I don't want to sound like Chicken Little here, but if you just read that paragraph, it gives you a pretty good indication of what might happen. Um, and I'll just quote a couple of sentences. "All provinces and territories have been presented with changes to the CCBF program that is largely a result of the federal government's commitment to tying new infrastructure investments to actions that increase the supply of housing." "The federal government will require some municipalities to provide housing needs assessments, uh, to access federal funding opportunities." So it doesn't say directly that the gas tax will affect it, but it says it pretty indirectly. And if you read, the letter is from the, um, Deputy Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, uh, to CAOs and clerks. He describes in the rest of the letter how Nova Scotia has complied with these things already. Uh, you know, so. May, maybe Counsel McLeod and Counsel McNeil are right. We will regret lowering the tax rate if we don't have the, uh, Canada Building Fund to rely on as in the past. But anyway, um. So what I'm suggesting at this point is that we keep an eye on this. The negotiations are taking place. But I think, secondly, we should maybe not today, give us some time to think and get some more information, because Alex and I had a bit of a conversation, and we don't know what the situation is in the rest of the provinces like that yet. We just know Nova Scotia's, uh. To possibly leave it as it is, it's worked well for us, but if there's going to be strings attached to it, like, housing is, is an issue, we know that, but we have, this building is more of a priority than, than housing. Uh, you know, our transfer station down north, uh, our trails, all of those things that we put the, the gas tax money into. So this, to me, seems like this is for the big cities, the big places that have the housing problems, where there's homeless people pictured, probably not on TV, got the public's attention, rural communities, yeah, they really don't matter that much. They'll, they'll survive. And the other unfair part of it is, is we just passed the budget today with having built in what we think we would get in, in the CCBF. That's not fair to us, because if that changes, the, the old agreement expired March, um, thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, just last month. So there's no agreement right now. So all of those things are, are circulating there, and I think I'd like to suggest we wait to get some more information. Uh, we did talk to, uh, MP Batiste about it when he was here, maybe get a reaction from him about what's going on or whatever. But anyway, I just wanted to bring it to council's attention and, and the public's attention, that these changes may be coming. Uh, the third item is a resolution, and I apologize for, uh, bringing this kind of suddenly, um, after I watched the hockey game last night, celebrated, read Nathan's report, I thought, I better look up when the deadline for this is, and the deadline for it is before our next, uh, council meeting. So it's just the basic, uh, resolution of council to, uh, support my, uh, placing my name forward for the, uh, FCM Board of Directors. So councils. Wish. Uh, you, you. I think the motion to pass the, uh, resolution. Yeah.
You have a second, isn't it? Second by Counsel McNeil. Any discussion on the motion?
Do you get accepted?
Sorry?
Do you get accepted? Are you going to run for? Okay.
The election process, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no guarantee, there's anything. Yeah.
And, uh, and we have, uh, in case you, you are, you are the winner, um, we have that expenses, right? We have we have in like a last time we was talking about.
We did talk about that. I don't believe we've built anything into the budget for that.
It's not in the budget?
I don't believe so. No, because I don't think we knew. We, we didn't know.
No?
We didn't know in any of our budget discussions that you were going to do this.
No, I, I didn't either, at that time either. Um. Alec, I think the, obviously, the, you will allow more. Yeah.
It's not. It's not. But last year, we moved forward with the same methods as last year, and council doesn't spend, all council doesn't spend all of the capital. So last year ended up being within budget because some were, some were not. So it could be that, say, hey, this year potentially, but there's no separate.
And we have the amount, uh, top amount for the charter?
Uh, this, I, I think, no, I.
We have top, you know, we, we decided it was going to be just a limit for the top, right? Because there's a lot of virtual meetings, so. And that was a discussion, the emerging discussion last time, so.
Yeah, I think we talked about bringing that forward as a, if anyone was going to be involved.
Involved, I think. We have to have, um, max for the amount of expense.
Yeah.
And.
Yes.
It's virtual, right?
Yeah. I think it was five thousand, that was the number. Is that right? So we.
Actually. I don't know if we ever formalized that.
No, we didn't. We said we were going to bring it forward in the budget discussions, which we didn't.
Because it's not, nothing in budget right now and it's not amount to limit. And so we need to put that before in, I don't know how much it's going to cost you travel, right?
That was what we discussed at a, at a special council session.
Every money comes, right?
We should put a, a ceiling on, uh, FCM travel or conference travel or if there was any, if there was any out of province. Yeah.
So I, I think there's two issues here. One is you need a motion to move forward for the election. That's our purpose today. So I would say that once that election will be held at the FCM in in June, so that's part one. I think part two, if you are successful, there still has to be a commit, a, a conversation about either travel considerations. If those meetings, we've had this conversation, that was, if they are virtual, that's a consideration rather than traveling because of the costs involved. So let's just be clear on that it's, the motion is so that you can move forward with the election. Yeah, no, and I'm just clarifying it because I don't want to have this conversation again. And we wouldn't have to have, and then once you're successful, I want to be just very clear, if you are successful, you still have to come back to council and get permission to travel.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we need to know how much he's going to spend. Like, like, it, it, it's just if, right? Yeah, the expense is going to be fifteen thousand for the year or we have a top of fifty thousand and the travel is going to twenty five.
Yes.
Why he's running, he's not allowed.
A hundred percent. And I think what the expectation would be councillor Patterson is that if you're elected, you would come back with, uh, projected costs of sitting on this board. So then council, whoever it is at the time can say we're allocating X number and then you're going to pick and choose whether it's A or B. Um, I think, I think that, I think no.
Say yes, but when I.
No.
Thirty thousand, oh, no, you can have it.
No, but what I think I'm saying, he's got, he's got to be successful first.
Exactly. And.
How much you're going to spend, right?
Well.
For all problem for, like, we're having a conference here in Bedak, it's, and, and, okay, just the FCM, not the NSFM, because that's also out of province too.
But you also just said, you just approved a budget based, like, the last motion was just to approve a budget based on what you were expecting. And now this is, this could potentially be another expense that is not a budget.
If, if.
Could be not a budget.
Yeah. If, if the, the travel expenses for council, so either way, um, I think for our purposes, and I understand what you're saying and I agree with you, there should be a limit on it. I don't know if you want us. We did, and that's why I was not in favor at the time. Um, but having said that, I think, um, we will proceed today with the motion to, uh, have councillor Patterson run for his office and then I think if we're going to make that motion, that there should be a second motion saying that if, if councillor Patterson is um, successful, then we have to have, there's a, there should be a motion to review the expenses involved with traveling. Yeah, we added that.
Oh, it is, and it's going that way all the time. But it had to be a limit to, to start with the travel, like a, you know, I can, I can ask you ten times I go to whatever, right? But the space is go, go, go. So I think we talked the last time, they was going to have just a limit of the travel expenses, uh, out of like a FCM.
Yeah.
Of our committees. So I don't know, maybe if the staff can review the policy of travel expenses and then can put a specific for this type of.
Well, we, we added to our last tra- the live travel policy that out of, out of province.
How much they can.
Yeah, we made, we made those improvements in the travel policy that if you're out of province, travel has to be approved by council. And one of the considerations of out approval, out of province travel is the cost involved. So to your point, and not to belabor this, but do we want to, um, we have allocated travel expenses as an annual budget item in the budget, correct? In general, so I guess the question is, is out of province travel is currently associated with those costs?
It's just a, a pot for costs.
Correct.
Yes, so there's nothing for, there's nothing for there, there's a pot to use. So I guess if you just approved a budget and you have a pot and you're staying within that budget, then and if you're all in agreement with that, then somebody doesn't go to something if there's an FCM trip to go on or two people go rather than five people go because there's an FCM meeting that, um, that councillor asked to go to that you've approved. So, you know, there could be other ways to look at it. There could be other decisions to make.
Correct, or conversely, if there is travel proposed for other councillors, then the potential is the FCM may be a virtual.
Well, exactly. I mean, think of it, you have, I'm sure you're all used to some type of budget. There's only so much in the envelope.
Yeah.
You can only spend it so many different ways. So if you just approved a budget and you're now approving if the, if councillor gets in as a board of director, then you have to make hard decisions of who goes where based on whatever is in the budget line.
No, and I'm with you and maybe, maybe the suggestion is, if I can make this, we're getting late in the day and everybody's getting tired. Maybe what we do is we, we approve the motion for councillor to, uh, support for him to run. And then if he's successful, we come back and have a conversation of what those impacts of traveling to those meetings can have to the travel budget for councillors as a whole. So we're not increasing the amount of travel right now, but whatever that potentially could cost has to come from that, but okay, but let's, let's be clear on that phrase, there, there will be implications. Uh, we will, we've made the motion to, to support you to move forward for the election, then we'll sit down after the results of that election to see what implications it has on the travel budget for council.
Right.
As the amount is in our current budget for this year.
Right, there's lots of different ways to look at it. Maybe you don't go to the NSFM, but you go to the FCM. Or maybe there's, yeah, there's choices, right?
So we good with that? All in favor of? And we've captured in the conversation that there's discussion or. Yeah, and after in the minutes as well, that if he is elected, then it could have implications on budget or tr- uh, travel expenses for the two, twenty four, twenty five year and the, the FCM will be a part of that consideration. Tendons at the FCM meetings will be a consideration. We good? Okay. Any questions, any questions from the public? Sorry, I put my, uh.
We have an exciting new meeting.
Okay, go ahead, yes.
DA McPattan and our citizen representative from the Federation of Agriculture and Oats, who very knowledgeable of the situation. The action described, I got a bit of this with how you could keep your file at the mall. You put something around the net and you program it on the computer where you want them to go. You don't need things, you know, it's amazing what's going on. But anyway, we did meet, uh, earlier actually. We are through documentation.
Yep, correct, yep.
I have not heard much of that situation.
No.
And we decided at that meeting, and I think that we weren't going to go that way. I think uh, we so if you had any evidence that had there's no, there's no changes.
Now, there'll be a form to fill out much like, uh, on slightly premises. It'll come to the committee, uh, the committee will make a ruling and, uh, so on and so forth. Um, we expect and, and Mr. Oats, Oaks expected that there'll be more of this in the future because more and more people, as we saw today with the zoning thing, are moving into Victoria County, setting up little hobby firms and so on and so forth. So, uh, it, it's an interesting, um, responsibility, I guess, that we have, uh, as municipality to, to, to police that or whatever, so. Uh, so if you have any residents, uh, I assume contact someone in the office, administrative office that has an issue and, uh, we'll go from there. Thank you, Warden.